The third time now, I again, we spoke at the last meeting that a chairmanship is not a right, it's something that should be earned and I've gotten to that point, I've earned it. And when things like this occur on the Board of Selectmen, and I've been snubbed for the third time now, it, we have, we have, we have a hard time enough in town as it is with, with image. And when things like this happen, it reflects even more poorly on us. At the last meeting, at the last time we did this, there were people who said to me that my Facebook presence was, was an issue. This time around, the shoe's on the other foot, and there were inappropriate things that were done on Facebook by sitting selectmen that really shouldn't have been done and should have recused themselves from the election process. It's their right to do so, they have every right to, to make their statements. However, because it's a, a, a board that's contained in town and everybody's on that board, unlike a state representative or a state senator, where representatives or senators from other districts can weigh in on that, this didn't reflect well on the board this time around. I received 22 emails and phone calls today from people that were wishing me well on this. I told them I didn't hold out a lot of hope for it, however, I would just like to state that I, I'm not opposed to Ruth. I think that it's the wrong decision, and I think that being passed over for the third time is, is not appropriate, and I'll leave it at that.
And I would just add that you need to get the votes to be chairman of the committee. This is not, you gotta get the votes.
You didn't hear what I said, but that's okay.
Yep, you need to get the votes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm, I would just add in that I think Ruth has worked like exceptionally hard this year with her, especially with her liaison work with the DPW and heading up the DPW Building Committee, and she's done an excellent job as vice chair, and I'm happy to support her.
I agree.
Is any other discussion from the selectmen? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Is there not a vice chair?
So that, once the chair is elected, the vice, the chair then takes over and they run that portion of it?
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no other, roll call vote, please. Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Murphy?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Brackett?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, five, zero, zero. Selectman George is now in the position of chair, and I will turn the process over to her.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your vote of confidence. Next, I want to open it up for vice chair, so I'll be accepting nominations for vice chair, if anyone would like to nominate anyone.
I'll nominate myself as vice chair.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ross.
And do you accept Dawn if we, after discussion?
Of course.
And, so let's do some discussion, any comments or any other nominations?
Well, I think we're just discussing this, this nomination at this point.
Yes, yeah, the vice chair.
Yeah, the vice chair, yeah.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, no other nominations, um, let's do a roll call vote in favor of Dawn Campbell being the vice chair. Paul Murphy?
Aye.
Sarah Wilkinson?
Aye.
Ross Brackett?
Aye.
Dawn Campbell?
Aye.
And Ruth George?
Aye.
Four to nothing. Dawn, you're the new vice chair, welcome.
Thank you, I believe that was four to one.
Oh, I'm sorry, four to one, four to one.
Yeah, four to one, thank you very much.
And next on the agenda is Board of Health reorganization. I believe that needs to be postponed tonight because Dr. Wedmore is not available for tonight's meeting, so that will have to be pushed off to the next meeting.
Correct.
That's number C. Number D is COVID-19 data presentation and review. Bruce, are you on?
I'm raring to go.
Okay, take it over.
Thank you. Here we are, um, let me get to the slideshow. Minimize this. I'm going to be relatively quick tonight. Most of these data you've seen, this is pretty much such an update. There are new slides at the end I'd like to share with you. The bottom line is, things look very good at this point in time. There have been no new cases from the 24th to July 1st on Cape Ann. That's the really good news, and again, I'm sure we'll discuss later, concerns about as we open up, making sure we minimize exposure, we maximize protection through social distancing, washing hands and face coverings. We're entering a really tricky time now, as we can see from other places that have done really well, like New York, and places that haven't adhered to strict protocols, the chance for reemergence of infections and clusters is very, very real. So I'm, I'm happy that things are looking good now, and again, that doesn't mean we can let down our guard at all. So that's my bottom line. Here we see the cumulative cases. These are, I'm really, again, focusing on community cases. They've been very constant in Rockport, and Rockport, Cape Ann, um, in terms of outcomes, mortality rates are similar in Rockport as they are in Massachusetts as in general. The gender ratio seems to be pretty consistent over time. Age distribution, again, Rockport's age distribution is older, these are community cases, than either Cape Ann or Massachusetts as a whole. An indication of infection would be a change in this age distribution brought on by more contact as younger folks visited, visit our lovely town. Hospitalizations, again, Cape Ann and Rockport have a much higher hospitalization rate than Massachusetts. This might be due to more ubiquitous testing outside of Cape Ann where milder cases are identified. Underlying health conditions, about a third of Rockport cases, similar to Cape Ann, have underlying conditions. I'll skip this slide. All these slides will be up on the website, and I really ask if there's anyone in the community listening or watching, if you have any feedback or comments or suggestions about data presentation, we welcome your input. In Rockport, half the cases, again, are in, in congregate living situations, unfortunately, three quarters of those folks in congregate settings have recovered. A brief look at the community cases that have recovered. In Rockport, sex ratio is about 50/50. The age distribution, again, a slightly older proportion of our recovered cases are over the age of 60, again, reflecting, I think, the prevalence of Rockport. Underlying conditions of those recovered, almost 40% of Rockport persons who have community cases who have recovered had underlying conditions, slightly higher than Cape Ann as a whole, but the numbers are relatively small. And folks in congregate settings, the slightly, well, the number, slightly more females than males have recovered. Age distribution reflects the age distribution of congregate living facilities. New data here, um, the last two columns or the last three columns is what I'm most interested in, the number of persons tested, the percent tested and the percent positive. You can see, and we'll talk more about this, I'm sure, when we talk about testing, 8% of the Rockport population has been tested, which is below the state average of 11%, and our percent positive is slightly above the state. Both of these are clear indications to me that we need more testing closer by, and particularly as we move into the summer and more visitors going to be coming, I think it's really important that we ramp up our ability to test. In fact, I wrote a email to Katie Brown, who is the chief infectious disease epidemiologist at the State Health Department, providing her with some of these numbers and requesting as DPH considers expanding testing, strongly urging her to consider testing in Cape Ann. And either this meeting or at a near-future meeting, I would suggest that perhaps we can talk to the other communities on Cape Ann and write, write a joint letter, either from select persons and mayors or the boards of health, urging DPH as they look to expand testing to strongly consider Cape Ann.
Bruce?
Bruce?
Yes?
A question.
Sure.
But that's a cumulative percentage, right? That's cumulative data, because now it would be zero for the recent.
Yes.
Um, yes, so the, um, that's right, with no new cases, if we were looking in the last week, um, you know, the percent positive would be zero, so our, actually, percent positive rate has been going down, if you recall, Ron, our percent positive rate last week was around, I think, 17 or 18%. But as, you know, the denominator increases and the numerator doesn't, that percentage positive goes down. I think that's pretty much what's happening across the Commonwealth as more testing goes on among asymptomatic, pre-symptomatic persons.
Right, so, so in the future, if there's some sort of trigger that we could identify, that would prompt us to push harder for local testing? You know, I don't know how much extra testing we need to do now.
Well, you know, I guess as long as the positive, the percent positive rate is higher than the state rate, I am concerned, but I, I appreciate that, and I guess I'd prefer to be proactive, because more people are going to be coming to Rockport and to Gloucester and to Essex and Manchester, and if we don't have testing in place, I think that reduces our ability to see emerging clusters or cases as rapidly as I would hope we could, so.
Thank you.
But your point is well taken, thanks.
Bruce?
Yes?
Can I just add that, you know, we, this is Barb McCarthy, um, we've also looking at our positivity rate as we've begun to expand testing for all patients that are coming into Addison, Gilbert and Beverly, and what we found, if we went back to May 1st, our, our rate of positive tests was 23%. We are now at 2%.
Wow.
So that's just by saying, let's test all inpatients, everybody who's coming for a procedure, all labor and delivery patients, all behavioral health patients, and expand that sort of into a more public health surveillance testing and surveillance. I think we're seeing the effect of that, even in our, just our small sample size of the two hospitals, but that's, it's encouraging. The other thing I would say is that we have asked the folks at our drive-through clinic in Danvers, if they see, to go to Ron's point about triggers, if they see an increase in people that are being tested because of signs and symptoms of COVID versus general screening, then we want them to raise the flag and let us know that, because that would be an indication that, that we, that we flipped some from just being a screening model to more symptomatic. So we've got a couple of those things built in, but again, it's not pure community, it's, it's only our hospital-based community, but at least we're headed in the right direction somewhat.
That, that's wonderful news, Barb, thanks. Again, I, I guess my concern is looking more to the future than the present as we open up, and, you know, as we've seen elsewhere in the country, and elsewhere in the state, concerns about infectious clusters, particularly when young folks are coming in who might not be residents of our community, carrying their risks with them. But I'm, I'm really happy that the percent positive rate is so low at, at the two hospitals. Here you can, this sort of looks at the increase in cumulative testing rates, and the good news is, you know, testing is increasing throughout Cape Ann, again, I, just not as rapidly. I guess I might be on the conservative side of this testing discussion, and we can talk about pooled testing and other options later, but I'm, I just really want to make sure we stay ahead of this. So this is PCR testing, and clearly, the, the change in cases we've noted is zero over the last week with no new cases. Whoops, I'm going, oh, am I going in the wrong direction here? Changes in percent positive, yeah. You can see there have, again, the denominator's increasing and the numerator staying the same. Here's a new slide that we haven't seen yet. We don't have serology testing data yet for Rockport. We hope to get some insight into that in, in the very near future, but this is serology testing in Massachusetts as a whole. You can see one really interesting pattern here, if you look at the bars rather than the cumulative rate, the bars are positives, and you can see the dipping, and this is the weekend effect. Those days where the, the troughs are the fact that the labs probably aren't reporting results on the weekends, so you're going, getting many fewer positive serology tests at these seven-day intervals for, for weekends back to April. But there is, you can see a growing, almost 700, excuse me, almost 70,000 serology tests having been performed, and, and, and there's the number of positives that we're seeing. Chassi, do you want to say anything about, oh, here's one other thing that we wanted to add to this week's report, and this is case investigations. This came up last week. Out of the 84 cases, out of, I guess, the 84 cases, investigations have been completed in 80 of them, 96% case investigations, two were lost to follow-up and two are still under investigation. So again, this is great news. As we move forward, my only desire is that we be proactive, if there are more people coming into town, I don't know whether we should think about, certainly not in a mandatory way, but perhaps in a volunteer way, trying to find out who some of the visitors are in case we need to do contact tracing with them as well, so. That's, um, that's my presentation. Any thoughts? Any questions? Chassi or Teresa, do you want to add to some of the information about testing or, or follow-up? Nope?
Okay. I have just, just a quick comment. I, I just wonder if there's some way that we can plan for testing at Denmark, because I know we're not really testing to do surveillance in general, but if there were an uptick at the hospital and percent positives or some other indicator that, that the risk in the community is going up, I hope there's some way that we could get testing done and kind of, you know, preferentially get it over to Denmark.
I can, I can speak to that, so, and Ron, I will forward you a document that came out from the state, I think it came out on Monday night, kind of spelling out exactly when long-term care facilities should be retesting, and it's in relation to the EMS region and how many cases per 100,000 in the region. And so Denmark received that on Tuesday morning and reached out to Beverly Hospital. They can't get more test kits through the hospital, I think every long-term care facility is looking to get test kits, but they found an alternative site for the test kits, so they, I was very impressed, they were really on, on, on the job, and they found an alternative site in an email, but they, they were clearly, they read it, they know, they know the state's involved, you know, there's enough oversight, they're, they're moving in the right direction. So I'll forward it to you, and then if you feel like we need to kind of reach out in a week or so and just ask how it's going, and if they've encountered any other obstacles, we could certainly do that, just kind of stay on top of it.
Excellent, I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Yep.
So Ron, let me just follow up one more bit, you know, to what Chassi said and what you were asking. What we knew to be true right now is that the state is asking for 100% of all employees in long-term care facilities to be tested by the 19th of July. If any one of those facilities has a positive employee, then 100% of the residents need to be retested. During that time, 100% of the employees need to be tested weekly until two weeks beyond all employees negative, and then, between then and the end of the summer, a random 30% sample of all employees in all long-term care facilities must be tested. So there's a real, there's a real huge push, as Chassi was saying, to get folks, both employees and residents, tested in long-term care.
Happy to hear that, I did, thank you.
That's part of the reason that we really have to preserve our test kits for, for Seacoast and for Ledgewood, which are under our flag, and we will certainly help any other long-term care facility find an alternative if they need to, because we anticipate we're going to need a lot of test kits between now and September.
Thank you.
And we also feel, just to add, we can complete the test discussion, we also feel that there's probably going to be a, a diversion of test materials to both the South and the West as the United States surges and other parts of the country. We're also hearing some rumblings and getting some warnings from a couple of our vendors to be cautious of that. So just as we got the supplies in April, May and June, they will be diverted away from us, and we will again go into sort of the Hunger Games when it comes to looking for testing equipment and test supplies and, and beginning to get a little bit more closed down, which isn't going to help the discussion that Bruce just had as well. So I think we're, you know, we're cautiously, it's a, it's a perfect storm of, of testing still, right now.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, Barb, and I think that was a good idea, Bruce, to maybe see if we could draft a letter between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health to the DPH requesting more testing sites, especially since we are a, a summer seasonal community, and we're very concerned that we don't have a lot of testing sites, and what can, what can they do to help us? I think that's a great idea. Thank you for that presentation, Bruce. Next is E, Board of Selectmen. The first thing is the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda tonight is approval of minutes and appointment of seasonal lifeguards. Do I have a motion?
I do. I move that the board approve all non-held items on the consent agenda. Second.
Do I have a second? Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Selectman Brackett?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Murphy?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman George, aye, so it's five, zero passes. Thank you very much. Next, going on to action items. Our first action item is the appointment of Mike, Michael Marino as a lieutenant. Do I have a motion?
You do, Madam Chair. Excuse me? Hi, everybody, how are you? Lieutenant Marino. Oh, okay, let me do the motion, please. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Michael Marino as lieutenant of the Rockport Police Department effective July 5th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a second, any discussion? I first would like to say thank you, Mike, I think you'll make a wonderful lieutenant. I believe the Chief Horvath is on the line and would like to say a few words.
Sure, I think I'll speak on my behalf, Assistant Chief Schmick is also on the line, so I can speak on his behalf, and Lieutenant Marino's in kind of a precarious position there, so I'm going to probably speak on his behalf as well. Mike's been with our department from, since 2014, he was appointed to a full-time officer in 2005, sergeant 2009, lieutenant, provisional lieutenant 2019. He holds a lot of value, holds a lot of responsibility for our organization, and he does an extremely good job at all of it, so it's been a tough year for Mike, but I, I'm hoping this is a bright spot for him, so, I, he has my full confidence and abilities, and, and he'll continue to serve the town extremely well.
Thank you, Chief.
May I jump in, Chairwoman?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I want to echo Chief Horvath's comments, I've always been impressed with Mike's professionalism, every stretch of the imagination, he's, he's just done a great job in, in the police department and community service, all those things that you want in a good police officer, so I strongly support this motion, and, you know, I think he'll be a terrific lieutenant, and Rockport's lucky to have him.
Thank you very much.
Reed? Any other comments?
Yes, please, if I may, you know, this is, Mike does such a great job in town, I've had many dealings with him, and he's always exhibited the highest levels of professionalism and compassion that I've seen. We're very, very lucky to have the talent pool in the police department in our town that we have, and I know there are many behind him that are going to be clamoring for his position through the years, but he's a great person to fill that position now, and I wholeheartedly support this, this is fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the selectmen? Okay, seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote, we've had a second. Roll call vote, Selectman Murphy?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Brackett?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George, aye, five to nothing, welcome, Lieutenant Marino.
Thank you very much, I apologize for not being in uniform or being there, but I really appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I'm in Boston, my son's having a minor procedure here at the Children's Hospital, he's My son's having a minor procedure here at the Children's Hospital. He's fine, but it's really noisy here and it's really chaotic under the circumstances, but I'm very pleased and, uh, you know, I can't thank everybody enough. Chief, Assistant Chief, it's, uh, going to be an honor to serve in this role. So, thanks again. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thanks, everybody.
Mike.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. Okay, going on to F, Board of Health. I'll turn that over to Dr. Newman. Number F, Board of Health. I'll turn that over to Dr. Newman.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the only item on the agenda for, uh, Board of Health is the approval of minutes from the meeting of June 17th. And I know we have one correction. Bruce, do you want to, uh, speak to that?
Um, sure. I, um, I, I lean just, um, and she does an incredible job, um, with the minutes. Uh, and you know, which is not easy to do because our discussions go back and forth. I just wanted to clarify a little statement when I said our focus is on the community. Um, what I had said at the meeting was our focus, uh, uh, the focus of the presentation I gave was on the community. I didn't want to give anyone the wrong impression, um, that, you know, that we were ignoring iss- issues in, uh, the congregate living, uh, facilities. So I sent Eileen that wording and she incorporated it. And I'm happy with those changes.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments regarding the minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept, accept the minutes of June.
The amended minutes, I should say.
The amended minutes of June 17th.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, we'll vote. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it passes four zero. We accept the minutes. And, uh, that's all we have for this portion of the meeting.
Okay. Um, number G, COVID-19 testing and contact tracing update. That would be the Board of Health, I believe.
Barb, do you, uh?
Yeah, I think I've, um, I think I sort of said as much as I needed to say about the testing. Um, again, new, new long-term care regs. Um, there's also an expansion of testing within Beth Israel Lake Health, what we're calling Level Seven for testing, and that includes visitors, um, that are going to be seeing patients in long-term care facilities, um, and, uh, daycare and, uh, summer campers. And lastly is, uh, this will be interesting, um, is folks who will be traveling to places where, um, testing would be, um, considered as part of their quarantine. So if you're traveling to Maine, i.e. So that's going to be a tough one for us to implement. That came out just today before the meeting started, so I still need to do a little bit of, uh, brainstorming and prepping with my team here, but that's a new group of folks to be, uh, routinely screened. Daycare and campers, daycare, folks and campers, um, visitors that might be visiting long-term care patients. And then lastly, uh, folks where the test result would impact where they're going for quarantining.
Thank you.
And we are also seeing patients that are be, are coming, or patients, um, residents, citizens, who are coming to be tested that are requiring it for return to work. So as office settings and manufacturing and those other places of employment are bringing people back to the office, there are certain settings that, uh, folks are requiring, uh, their employees to be tested and test negative before returning to the office setting. So we're seeing a few of those, not a lot, but some.
Okay. Thank you, Barb. Chassie, Cassie or Teresa, do you have anything to add to that? Are they unmuted?
They're unmuted.
Okay, okay. Seeing none.
One other, please, uh, Chairman.
Yes.
There's a question raised regarding, uh, the low, low volume of positive cases, uh, impacting the staffing level of contact tracers. Is that anything worth discussing? Anybody have any, anything to say about that?
Chassie and Teresa, did you hear that as well? I heard that the state is beginning to back off, um, the hiring process and even laying some contact tracing folks off because there's not enough cases to trace. Did you, have you heard that on your calls?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Wow.
And is there a mechanism for gearing back up should the conditions warrant?
I believe so. But we haven't, I don't know the details of how it, how it works, but yes.
And so far, we haven't needed to use the pool of, uh, additional contact tracers. Is that correct?
That's right, not in Rockport.
We, we did do, um, try with two cases that we needed, uh, language help with, and, um, it didn't work out with CTC. So, you know, we just finished them up ourselves.
Really?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more on number G, we'll move on to H, considerations of current or additional restrictions relating to COVID-19. This is sort of a Board of Health and Board of Selectmen joint discussion. Um, so any additional restrictions that we need to discuss tonight?
Madam Chair, I would say that this would be, um, an area where we could also address, if the boards are willing, the, um, the last outdoor dining area.
Perfect.
I would also like just to have a, um, discussion. I've seen on some social media real concerns about, uh, face coverings in the downtown area, um, not being enforced or, um, people sort of forgetting, uh, the requirements or resisting. Um, I really want to talk, I don't know whether this is a reopening issue or an issue now, but I'm really concerned as this weekend, hopefully there'll be enormous number of visitors to our community. I'm really making sure that, um, we enforce those regulations. So I want...
Okay, so let's take them one at a time. Um, let's talk about face cover, let's talk about the outdoor dining. Um, all the, um, Selectmen, I think the Board of Health also got the new, um, thing for Nate's down on Back Beach about outdoor dining.
Yep.
Mitch, I, I had a question. The, the drawing that they sent, is that, are the, the tables are drawn really small, but is that in the, the area that you gave them?
It is, and I'm actually, I'm going to ask the chief if he can just chime in here. He conducted the, um, the initial version of the site visit. This is certainly subject to, uh, John also, John Coolen also completing his, but the chief can speak to the, the actual in-person layout.
Great.
You know, uh, Gary LeBlanc and I, Gary from the DPW and I went out to the site a couple of days ago, met with the owner. Uh, it's a very, very small area. Uh, there's only two tables going there. Um, the size of the tables and the area in which he's designated, he's going to rope off, uh, fit, believe it or not. The drawing is certainly not the scale, uh, but we, we were comfortable with what he presented. And he knows he can only have those two tables in there, and he was very cognizant of what the expectations were.
Yeah. And I think we should also add in that, um, Laura Halliwell from Millbrook Meadow Committee was, was actually at the park the day the reopening committee did our site visit there, because the area is kind of right inside the park, but it's an area where they can't do any plantings because of the roots of the tree that is right there. So, um, it actually is like luckily a great, a great location.
Right. If it wasn't for them stepping up for that, they, it wouldn't be an area. So that's great that they stepped up and they can use that.
Right, because parking is really tight right there, so.
Right.
Graphic.
Yeah. Um, so Mitch, do we need a motion to accept the plan?
Yes, please. So I would ask that, um, it'd be a joint vote between the two boards to approve the outdoor dining for Nate's, subject to, um, final inspections and sign-off from, uh, police, fire and health.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make the motion. I'd, I'd like to make the motion that, uh, we accept Nate's restaurant, uh, uh, plan to, and, uh, subject to a review of the, uh, public safety, Board of Health and things of that nature.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. I'll start with Board of Selectmen. Selectmen Murphy?
Yes.
Blackman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Blackman Brackett?
Aye.
Blackman George, aye. Board of Health, Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
And Barb McCarthy?
Yes.
That's nine to zero passes, so Nate's will get their tables and that will be a great addition to the other dining tables outside. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um, one of the other things we're going to talk about is face coverings. So we'll move on to that next, and then we'll do the, um, seat covers.
Sure.
Yes?
Whenever you're ready, I can speak to what efforts we have in place for the face coveries down.
Okay, that would be great, Mitch. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we, we have been and we continue to in, in our plan for this weekend, and certainly Chief Horvath this hearing can, can add to this. Um, we've had a pretty extensive, um, group of individuals monitoring this. Some things that say there's, there's no one wearing masks and other things where people are saying that everybody is. Um, I can tell you from the enforcement end of things, we have been very, very diligent in having folks downtown. Uh, certainly the police are cognizant of what's going on when they're down there. They've had some details down there as well. We've had, um, several times a week, and we've had, at this particular point, yesterday, today, through the weekend, we'll have an enhanced presence, not only with certainly police being around, but also our fire department and our forest fire department. Uh, we've had a very heavy presence, really pushing the education portion of things, giving out masks, uh, having significant, and generally, generally speaking, positive interactions. On that, we've given out a very large number of masks, uh, cumulatively, since we started the effort. Uh, Chief, do you want to add anything in on that?
Everything you said, Mitch, is right on. Uh, as far as the, the folks not wearing masks, we're not encountering a lot of people. People have masks or scarves or face coverings on around their necks many times, and when people approach, they pull them up. So if somebody's driving by, they, it may appear that somebody doesn't have a mask on, which may be the case, but when they're being approached by people, they're pulling them up. And, and I'm going to be honest, the, the compliance is much better than what I anticipated. So, uh, I guess I'd caution you, be careful what you read on social media. It's, it's not all true. Um, and judge for yourself. Uh, I've been down there and, and like I said, compliance is, is much better than what I, what I had expected. So, uh, we'll continue to be diligent because as time marches on, as we know, people will become, uh, more complacent. Hopefully not, but I think that's just human nature. So we'll, we'll continue to remain on it, um, until we get a definitive answer to this virus.
Thank you. Selectmen Wilkinson?
Yeah, just to, um, add on to that, we discuss, um, kind of downtown, especially face coverings in reopening meetings every week. And, um, we all have had very similar observations as the chief. I mean, obviously it's not a hundred percent, but you know, part of what we do is when we're, when we're downtown and in the downtown area, kind of observe. And, um, we have all, I think it's fair to say, Barb, kick in if you want, but Ben, Ben fairly impressed with the, with the mask, you know? And it's true that, you know, sometimes it's down around people's necks, you know, but, but in general, um, like, I, I think we've all, it's fair to say that we've all been impressed. We're not down there 24/7 as none of us are, but, um, but I think very similar to observations as the chief. Barb, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I, and I don't think we've seen, uh, blatant disregard. Um, I think if, you know, um, if I've seen folks and, you know, I've sort of, you know, sort of touched my mask, so to sort of prompt folks, they said, oh yeah, you're right. You know, so I think that it's more forgetfulness versus a, uh, you know, a blatantly not following our policy. I think people have been, for the most part, respectful of our, um, of our, our protocols.
Yep.
Just one comment that I could make quickly. Um, is it possible on the weekends? Cause I think from my observation, it's really not people from Rockport who aren't wearing the mask. It's people from out of town who just don't know. Um, is it possible to have a little bit, um, better signage? Like that sort of, that, what is it called? The traffic sign that you see when you come into town? Like, is it possible for the weekends to put something like down in Dock Square?
So we actually, we have, we, we keep that running seven days a week, and it's, we move it around so that people don't get, um, you blend in on them.
Okay.
Currently posted at the foot of Broadway, um, entering T-Warf, and, um, it's down to two messages, and one of them is, uh, wear a mask.
Okay. I was thinking maybe, uh, at Dock Square would be a good place on these busy weekends, just because that's where most of the foot traffic is, sort of in your face. Just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Mary Beth. Any other comments on face coverings?
I guess I've run into several out-of-towners, and when I suggested that they, uh, put on their masks, they've refused blatantly, and they've said, you know, stay, stay over there. I'm over here. So I, I, you know, um, clearly it's anecdotal evidence, but I, I applaud the fact that, uh, we have so many people trying to follow up on this, and it will be very crowded this weekend. So I think we really, again, need to be right on top of this. And I thank everybody for their efforts. The chief and all the other town folks who are helping monitor. Um, and my concern is without the towners who sometimes seem unaware, um, that, uh, wearing face coverings is a requirement to be downtown.
Mitch, do we have that group, uh, the firefighters and the group that are going to be, are they going to be on this weekend?
There will be, um, an extra-large presence, actually.
Right, right.
Fire, forest, fire and police.
Yeah. And all giving out masks as needed and talking to people. Yeah, that's great.
I just want to add one, one comment, Ruth, is that, you know, at our reopening committees, I also, uh, think that the lodging community has been, uh, very supportive as well. And they play another role, folks that are coming to stay more than just, uh, for the day, but are saying, um, I think that they've been very active in helping us to, uh, to support our mask use as well. So, um, I'd like to give them a shout out for that.
Great, that's great to hear.
You know, it's another layer of, of recommendation and suggestion.
Yep. And hopefully all the shop owners will be saying it to people too, to remind them as they're coming in, you have to have a mask, put on your mask before you come into my shop and, and that type of thing. So it's going to be reinforced a lot of different places. Thank you.
Ruth, I think that's a great idea to have the shopkeepers reinforce that as well. I know they're busy trying to, um, you know, promote their, their goods, but, uh, reinforcing that message, I think, is a wonderful suggestion.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, next, under that, um, additional restrictions and, um, is toilet seat covers in public restrooms, reduction of aerosol, aerosolized virus spread. And that was a Board of Health addition. So, Board of Health, would you like to speak with that and talk to us about that a little more?
Bruce, did you bring that up, um, initially?
Leslie and I sort of brought that up. Um, we received a letter and there've been several articles that have been published. Um, and, uh, the general sense is, um, toilet seat covers, um, for where there are toilet seat covers, remembering to put the toilet seat covers down, um, and where there are not toilet seat covers, um, adding toilet seat covers and making sure they're closed, um, helps reduce the aerosolized virus spread. There've been, uh, studies, um, that have demonstrated that. And, uh, I was hoping that we could, um, place covers on all the public toilets. Leslie, do you want to add anything?
Um, just that Tom Barrett, who sent us the email, is on the call tonight, and also that I have spoken with Mitch about it. So he can explain the difficulties of installing and maintaining these. maintaining these covers that will break quite readily over time.
So I had a conversation with the Assistant Director, Public Works, and the Public Properties Foreman that oversees the cleaning of the public restrooms in our public facilities. And the general consensus from both of them was that, number one, they probably, there's less of a chance that they will get used and there's a high chance in their belief that they will be readily damaged. So a lot of the damage that DPW finds in public restrooms are from people who don't want to touch anything with their hands. But very often, they'll kick something. So often, you know, just to go through what's there now, there are no lids, they're the U-shaped toilet seats. So there isn't anything to touch right now when you go in. Their thought is if somebody needs to open something, they're probably going to do it with their foot. And what they've seen when people try to lift the toilet seats with their feet is that it ends up snapping it off its base. But most typically, they see damage to the flush handles because people don't wish to touch them, so they kick them. And they're ends up being damaged. So the thought is, it's unlikely that they'll end up getting used regularly and there's a high likelihood that they would end up being damaged and it would be just another touch point that may end up needing to be cleaned.
If I can?
Yes.
Madam Chair, to address Mitch's point, I know we're not going to retrofit these toilets with any extra plumbing, but there are foot flushers that could go in. So maybe for future use, it could be considered because I don't think even after this COVID stuff, hopefully soon goes away, that, you know, people are still going to be in the habits that they're in now and not want to touch things. So maybe that's something we could look into and, you know, just have a foot flush so people don't have to touch anything and we could not have the damage to public property like we may or may not see.
Good idea.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Newman?
Yeah, I, to sort of broaden the discussion, I think the risk of transmission from the plume of aerosolized virus in the, you know, after a flush, it's kind of a theoretical risk. I think there is some evidence from what I read that other coronaviruses have been transmitted in that way. But I don't know if there are concrete cases of this being documented. So, you know, but there are risks. And when I looked through various sources, I couldn't find anybody recommending, anybody from an official source recommending lids on toilets. Recommendations include, you know, to decrease transmission in bathrooms, which are a risky place, increase ventilation, limit the number of people in the bathrooms, limit the amount of time people spend in the bathrooms, focus on hand washing, make antiseptic wipes available, make sure there are paper towels instead of blowers, you know, to dry hands. So those are things which I think, to be honest, I don't go in the bathrooms that often, so I don't know what all the toilets have presently. But I would think that focus on those things would probably get us better, a better bottom line than focusing on the lids. So that's just my sense of it.
And one other thing, just to add on to that, Dr. Newman, is maybe on these crowded, busy weekends, and this has probably already been talked about with the opening committee, is just extra cleaning of the bathrooms. I think right now, are we doing it just twice a day Mitch?
So they're still being cleaned on the hour with the touch surfaces and that includes the actual toilets themselves.
Okay.
They're done, the electrostatic sanitizer goes in twice a day.
Oh, okay. But they're, okay, but they're being sort of sanitized every single hour? I think that's excellent.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Can you share with the group what you shared with us at reopening this morning about what you know about our cleaning protocols for our public restrooms versus what other people are not doing?
Yes, so we're certainly way ahead and it was raised actually this morning in the group that we're currently the only, to our knowledge, the only public restroom that's open in the area right now.
Wow.
We are really ahead of others with the protocols that we've implemented, with the sanitizing that's going on. We also are fortunate, and this was just a needed upgrade that happened recently, happened at the end of last year, we have enhanced ventilation. In Front Beach, we went through and there's a brand-new system that's in there, so there's increased airflow. We've got very, very heavy ongoing cleaning, touch surfaces. We've made sure that the doors are all propped open so that no one is touching any of those. And then, of course, we've got the sanitizers going in. Did I cover everything from this morning Barb? My apologies, I'm not sure that I hit everything.
Yep, you did.
Do we?
So right now, we have the three bathrooms, right? Front Beach, Back Beach and T-Warf?
And Back Beach is still closed.
Okay, that's still closed. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, we don't have any porta-potties around anywhere, do we? With none, correct?
We've consciously not placed those out. Concerned about needing to clean those and that's just not something that we're able to do at the moment.
That's fine. I just didn't know if we, I wanted to make sure we didn't have any, that's all.
We have not.
Thank you.
Do we limit the number of people going in or do we recommend a limited number of people? I'm thinking in particular on T-Warf, probably would be the busiest location, but...
So we aren't at the moment. I don't know that, to date, we've seen a lot of crowding. Certainly this weekend will be a test to see. We do have some special distancing reminder signage going up. We just got another batch of that in. So that'll be placed in the restrooms tomorrow morning. There's not active monitoring of that though.
Thank you. So I think that's a great idea, I mean, and discussing it, the toilet seat covers. I don't get a feeling that there's a needed vote for recommending seat covers, per se, from what I've heard. I do think it will be good to maybe have the DPW sort of investigate future toilets that do have to be put in, that we have some type of, maybe ones with a sensor that it automatically flushes or that type of thing. So there's pretty much hands-free, they're pretty much everywhere now. So.
And same for the sinks too Ruth, in the future. Because right now, you have to sort of touch the sinks to turn them on, at least the ones at T-Warf.
Yep, yep. And we do have a limited number of them in town. There aren't a lot of them. So that would be maybe some good technology to get in place for the future. I mean, we're only going to have more germs as we get on the pike, so good food for thought. Thank you Bruce and Leslie for bringing it up. Any other considerations of current additional restrictions relating to COVID? Okay, so I think I'll go on to I, which is long-term care and congregate housing update. I will start that off by saying I've spoken to Rockport High School Apartments and Pigeon Cove Ledges Manager Dawn Groves. Everything is going well there. They have no patients that are residents that are symptomatic or have any worries or anything. The same thing for Milbrook Park. I spoke to Lee Duda there and they're doing well. I think a lot of the residents are getting a little itchy to visit with each other and do a little socializing with family and friends, but they understand the importance of it. I did not reach Old Farm and Support of Living, but I did leave Heather Delia a message and she does know my number and would contact me if they were having any problems. So I think we're doing good there. I think, I think those three, well, really four areas are really spot on and they've got a lot of people checking on them and helping them out. They've got plenty of masks, so they don't have a problem with that. Chassie or Teresa, did you want to talk about Denmark at all? Any additions or problems there?
Denmark reported this week that they've moved everybody off the COVID-19 wing, so they have no positive cases currently in residents or staff.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Good news.
That is great.
Absolutely, that's very, very good. Great. Thank you. Jay, reopening advisory group updates. Sarah and Barb, do you want to tell us about that? And anyone else who's on the committee?
Sure. Barb, did you want to touch on phase three a tiny bit? Or do you want me to just go into our meeting?
Yeah, just start in and we can talk about phase three, yeah.
So reopening committee continues to chug along. Everyone has seen the outdoor dining. It looks as though, you know, several of them are up and running. Looks like we just approved Nate's, which is great. The Red Skiff on Mount Pleasant Street has been approved. The Jersey barriers are there. We were a little bit concerned because they haven't put tables out yet and it turns out that they've had an issue getting tables. So they're working on it. So I just want people to know that because we've just let them know that obviously we can't block those spaces forever. But they're working on getting tables and opening up. Today, we went over our, the outdoor display applications, which I can kind of lead us. We're excited to kind of approve some, but we're also, we have some kind of deep frustration with some of what's going on downtown. But I will, I'll leave that part for when we get to the outdoor display applications. But next week, we are leading another call, Zoom call for all business owners in town. And that should be, you know, interesting, at that point, we will be into phase three. Phase three, as most of you probably know, the governor has announced starts on Monday and, which kind of opens a whole other set of businesses. It won't, it doesn't actually, I don't think it really affects the businesses downtown yet. They seem to be kind of up and running with the regulations and the number of customers they can have in at a time. So at our next meeting, we'll probably see what else the town can be doing to support them and just kind of generally how the first few weeks have gone. And then we might come back to these two boards with some additional ideas. But Barb, is there anything I should add or anything else?
No, I'll just, in case folks haven't read it, just the list of things that are in step one of phase three. So we're seeing these phases, but there's also steps within them. So step one in phase three is movie theaters and outdoor performance venues. We had some discussion about whether Shailin Liu would be part of this, but it really is clear that it's an outdoor performance venue. Museums, cultural and historic sites, fitness centers and health clubs, certain indoor recreational activities with low potential for contact. So we'd have to figure that out. And some professional sports teams without spectators.
Great.
Not huge for us. There's certainly some things that we'd want to pay attention to and we want to make sure the library is all set too. We had discussion about the library and make sure that they feel comfortable with their, where they're at and how they're using their space and seeing residents as well.
Great, thank you. It makes me think of Windover and their outdoor performance center over there. So hopefully they're in the group and on someone's radar.
Thanks Ruth. Yeah.
They seem, they probably, because they have a lot of New York people, probably aren't doing anything this year, but they'd be a good person to touch base with. That's the only outdoor performance person I can think of right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree.
Great.
Maybe the music festival that happens in Milbrook Park too. That might be something that comes up.
August.
Or maybe the bandstand, the Sunday night bandstand concerts?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But they'd have to figure out their instruments.
Yeah.
I'd be nervous about the band concerts with their instruments, so I have to talk about them a little bit.
Yes. And even if they did it, maybe they could do a Zoom one. Yeah, maybe they could do it Zoom-wise and, you know, we've seen so many of those on the rate, on TV and things of them practicing and them putting over a loudspeaker down there or something and people in their cars or social distancing or something. There are ways around it, so that's another good one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, outdoor display application approval.
Ruth?
Yes?
Could I just give a quick update? It's not on the agenda, but we've had a couple meetings so far for the school reopening committee. And I can save this to our next meeting if you guys don't want an update now, but I don't know if you wanted me to include little updates as we go along.
Yeah, no, that could be in the, you know, reopening advisory group, because that's a school opening group. Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so as last, last night, we had our second meeting and we, Rob Lebov at the school has formed, I think, eight different subcommittees for different aspects of the school opening. But DESI gave us their official guidance and it's an initial guidance still at this point. Just to give you a couple features of it for people on the Board of Health to think about is the six-foot social distance requirement is now in schools going to be a three-foot social distancing. So students can be seated three feet apart and masked at all times. And that's for grades two and higher. So kindergarten and first do not have to wear masks. And also, they are not having a limit on the amount of students per classroom. So in August, each school, and this is what we're working on now, has to submit plans to DESI for either in-person school, a hybrid, which is like, you know, half-time, half the students one day, half the students another day, or strictly online. So those plans have to be developed, that's what we're working on, and submitted to DESI by August. Some other news out of the school reopening committee is that schools are going to get compensated, compensation from the state to help cover their PPE costs. And the one thing that I did want to mention to the Board of Health, in the past, we've had flu vaccination, clinics done through the Board of Health. In the recent years, we haven't done that. But this year, DESI is suggesting that all students and staff get flu shots when they become available. So that might be something that the Board of Health might want to talk about for the fall, just sort of put on our radar screen. Like I said, that's something that we haven't done in the past couple of years, but I think this year we may be asked to help in that. So those are just some of the highlights. And Barb, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, it raised my eyebrows a little bit when they talked about the, you know, everybody in the world knows a six-foot distance. Then the schools come out with a three-foot distance. But the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control both endorse three feet with the, knowing that the infectivity and the illness profile in kids is less than adults. So the six-foot requirement is still there for the adults, for teachers and staff. It's a three-foot that is, has been modified for kids with endorsement by AAP and the CDC. I specifically looked at that. That sort of raised my eyebrows. They're also talking about another couple of things, is really trying to cohort kids. You know, kids spend a lot of time in hallways, going back and forth to their lockers, back and forth to lunchroom, back and forth to classes. So they're really trying to keep kids in one place and how best they use that time. And to try to cohort kids with teachers so that if there does need to be contact tracing, that cohort is small and confined. So I think it was well thought out. There's a lot of detail in it. We haven't dug into the detail as much yet, but our subcommittees are all meeting, Mary Beth, what is it, over the next couple of weeks? Because our big, next big meeting of the full group is on the 15th. So we'll, all our subcommittees will be meeting between then and then.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Ruth, if I can add one thing, there was a long discussion on the Tuesday call about three feet versus six feet. Six feet is still recommended, although three feet is tolerable. I don't know whether they've resolved the issue of where you measure from, whether it's desk to desk or back of chair to back of chair, which has a huge influence on room design. So I don't, Barb, maybe you have updated information about that?
It's a seat. We got a sort of a floor map from DC last night. We got a, um, sort of a floor map from, um, DC, uh, last night at, so it's, it's chair to, or not desk to desk. And front to back as well, chair to chair, side to side, chair to chair. So yes, you're right, um, six feet is recommended, but, um, three feet is, is tolerable. And there, um, the one other thing is that, um, uh, the superintendent is also what he's calling, you know, sort of a stress test. He's asking the principals to really take a look at how many kids in the class, how many kids in the school, how, what are the size of the classrooms? You know, can we use alternate spaces? What about the library? What about the cafeteria? What about those other places that even community partners, are there places in the community where we could, um, do classes in person? Because the goal definitely is, Mary Beth, didn't you get this as well? The goal is to put kids back in the classroom.
Absolutely.
Both ABC, AAP, as well as, um, um, as well as the State, uh, Department of Education is really to get kids back in school if at all possible, if we can.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the plan and we'll work toward that, knowing that we need three plans to be submitted to the state.
And all, all three plans could change at a moment's notice.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that, that's, that's what every school district is facing across the Commonwealth.
Yep.
You know, there's other things too, just to let everybody know, there's, there's problems with, you know, transportation, how many kids can go in a bus? Um, and if kids can't go on the bus and parents are dropping off, there's, there's traffic concerns. So as we dig into all these little subcommittees, like I said, in the next meeting, maybe I can have more details, um, of, of what specific, what it might look like in Rockport or things that people are thinking about. Um, but there's, there is a lot, um, there's a lot of effort going into this right now. There's also, um, uh, Mike Kelly, who's the chairman of the school committee, is proposing to put regular updates on the school committee or the Rockport High School page so that that can be sort of like the area that people in town go to, to see, you know, you know, what, what we're working on, where we are in the process. Um, and that's going to be updated as we go along throughout the summer, just to keep parents and people in the community updated. So that was a good idea.
And there will be a parent survey that's going out and we had some discussion about the timing of that last night at the meeting. Should it go out now to get the feel from parents, whether they really feel comfortable sending their kids back into a classroom or not? Uh, versus waiting until we have some sort of structure to tell parents and say, you know what, here's what we're thinking, would you feel comfortable? So, um, superintendent is also looking at the timing of that parent survey, but there definitely will be, uh, one going out. Lastly is, is, uh, food service. All well and good if, if kids are three feet away from each other and have masks in a classroom, but boy, they take their, their mask off to eat lunch and, and whatever, and then you've, you've really sort of messed that whole thing up. But they're not recommending that kids go to the cafeteria to eat. So that will be a real struggle for that subcommittee to sort of think about how you do lunches and when you do lunches and how you stagger them. Um, and also the specialty groups, how do you deal with, um, you know, special ed and some of those, um, unique challenging, um, students and their specialty needs? Where, wearing a mask is really difficult for them to learn. So more to follow, but, um, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of people working on it. Good job, Mary Beth.
Yeah, great job, Mary Beth and Barb, thank you very much. We'll keep that as an agenda item for now.
Thank you, yeah. That was very helpful.
Very good, thank you. Um, next, number K, outdoor display application approvals. Is that Sarah and Barb again?
Yeah. So, um, we, as we discussed at our last meeting, the selectman's office kind of sent an email blast out to all businesses with the application for outdoor displays. Um, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, um, businesses, all downtown, applied. Um, several, actually, I think almost, I think all of these were renewals, uh, maybe one wasn't, but nine or 10 of them were renewals, meaning that they applied for and were given an outdoor display permit last year. So, um, we went through the list and we looked at the, um, at the applications. All of the applications, um, looked fine except for one that needed one adjustment, which I can share in a minute. But then we had, um, a member of our group went downtown today, there was some concern. At this point, um, businesses are only supposed to have a sandwich board with safety information on it. And I think we've been a little bit, we've given a little bit of leeway in terms of if it has the safety information and then, you know, what they have for sale and that type of thing. So we've been a little bit lenient with the information on the sandwich board. But, um, at this point, only, that's the only thing, item that, that businesses are supposed to have outside is that sandwich board. And it was discovered today, when I got, um, I believe 27 text messages of photos, that, um, close to a dozen businesses, maybe more, have enormous outdoor displays out, um, some of which are blocking the public way, um, way more than we have ever, you know, allowed in the past. And, um, I don't at all want to come across anti-business, I think it's pretty clear that the reopening committee is pro-business. But, um, we are huge supporters of, um, equality for all of our businesses and everyone getting a fair shot and the presence of businesses that are playing by the rules. And it's only fair to those businesses that we, you know, that we keep the rules consistent for everyone. So, um, I would propose that of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, of the 10 applications that we have, um, five of them are, um, following the guidelines so far. They don't have anything more than their sandwich board out and their applications all fall within the regulations. So I, if you'd like, I can list those businesses. Um, I know our office sent the, um, applications out, there's a little confusion over the, these two boards getting the application. So I know that they were sent out, but not, um, till like right before the meeting. But, so, um, the stores that, the businesses that we recommend, uh, direct approval are, um, Wicked Peacock, Struck Boutique, Coast and Country, Good Dog Gallery and Sea Blast. So those, um, businesses, everything seemed, you know, and then they will be told that they're literally only allowed to put out what, what has been approved, so what's in the pictures. So if any of us were to go down there and look, you know, it should match what is in the applications. Does that make sense?
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, I think the easiest would be if there's a, a, um, a motion for those and then I'll get into the second set in a second.
So moved.
So, so Paul, you made the motion?
So moved, yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second with Don Campbell. Okay, so let's do any further discussion about those five that are listed?
Just a question from a, uh, a health point of view, is, is the main concern obstruction of traffic flow and forcing people together and social distancing making, being, making social distancing more difficult?
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, the idea of the outdoor displays has always been to give people a, a small taste outside of what is inside and to just draw people into the businesses, but not to give a yard sale effect or to, um, actually be a yard sale where you can purchase. So that's why it's supposed to be just a small sample and some of the regulations are like one mannequin or, you know, one small piece of furniture. Um, so all of these fall within those regulations and we're comfortable that you, that, you know, patrons could safely get in and out and walk around outside with, with these applications.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or concerns before we take a vote? Okay, let's do a roll call vote as to, um, agreeing to, um, have these five be passed off for, um, their display, their signboard and everything Sarah just mentioned. Selectman Murphy?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Brackett?
Aye.
Selectman George, aye. Dr. Cohen?
Uh, yes.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Barb McCarthy?
Yep.
So that's nine votes, yes. Great, thank you very much and it passes. That's great. We'll start with those five and then work on the other ones and try to get some more up.
Yeah, hold on, I can actually give you, um, so there are five more that have applied and, um, but, so they can all, with the exception of Carol Lee's needs one, Carol Lee's Cottage, um, needs one adjustment to their application. Um, we just need to cross out, they have like an extra hanging, pe, item, ha, ha, an extra hanger that you would hang something on, that has to be deleted. But, um, with the exception of that, the other five, um, have submitted applications, the applications are all correct. The issue is they all currently have, um, some of them enormous displays outside. So, um, to not hold them up, you know, another week and a half or two weeks, I think Mitch and I discussed this before the meeting, that there could be a motion to approve them. Uh, Mitch, how did we say it?
Subject to, um, full and immediate compliance with the submitted plan that's been approved by the board.
Yeah, so basically the building inspector, so if we, um, approved it with, subject to, you know, full and immediate compliance, the building inspector would, um, you know, go down and do a personal visit to each of these businesses. The town administrator might have to go with him. And, um, they would then have to immediately remove everything that's out there and, you know, become into compliance. And then if they're, if they don't, then, um, you know, they would, they would kind of start in, into the cycle of being fined and warnings and all that. Um, beyond that, because we've seen so much early kind of disregard for the rules, there's, there's another probably close to a dozen businesses that have, that didn't even apply and have big displays. Um, we discussed having a kind of one strike, you're out policy where, you know, we don't have the resources this summer and, and lots of people are playing by the rules. So the building inspector would make one, you know, give one warning basically. And after that, if places aren't in compliance, then, um, we would have to take away their permit for the year. So kind of two things mixed there, but I think if someone wanted.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. Because I will tell you that some of the, some of what we've seen as, as this afternoon are blocking, you know, the public way, things out in the street and it's, it's honestly dangerous and it's not, it's not fair or it's, and it's not safe.
Yep. So Sarah, just so I have this straight, you, the, the five businesses that you're talking about that are not in compliance will be conditionally approved? And then the other businesses who have, um, displays out that don't even have a permit in, then we're not considering that because that's just an enforcement issue that we have to take care of, correct?
Yes, yeah. They'll be, they'll be visited by the building inspector and told to take everything down and submit an application the correct way.
Okay.
Um, so I think the motion could be, um, I move to, uh, I move to approve Art Nook, Carol Lee's Cottage minus the, um, coat hanger, is that the, the bag hanger?
Wrap.
The wrap, the hanging rack. China Gifts International. Oh, actually, I think China Gifts International should have been with the other one. I think they were actually fine.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, Lou Lantern and Artisanos, subject to full and immediate compliance.
Second.
Hearing the motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote with both boards. Selectman Murphy?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Brackett?
Aye.
Selectman George, aye. Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Barb McCarthy?
Yes.
Okay, so that's nine, nine to zero. So we'll tentatively, we'll approve those with the condition that they do what Sarah did in the mo, said in the motion. That will be great, get them going. Um, I, I have to tell you, there was one that I have sent pictures to, um, several people in the last three weeks where there was a large, um, card table next to the business with pottery and all kinds of things out there. And they were told two or three weeks to move it and they kept putting it back. So I think that's kind of that one strike and you're out, well, this person said three strikes, so.
Yeah, I, there are, yes, there are a few that unfortunately have been like that and, um, and then, and honestly, they haven't even applied, so.
And, and I think some of these people are new businesses this year. I mean, they might have changed hands and this is their first season doing it. So we have to think of that too, but, uh, it's great that you're going through them one by one and getting them up and going so that they do have more outside display and can try to pique people's interest and help the merchants get their businesses going. Thank you. Um, next.
Ruth, one second. Uh, will we also keep this on agenda for, uh, subsequent meetings until we get it resolved?
Yes.
You know, I think one of those that will, we will need to just continue to, uh, monitor enforcement, um, it'll be a standing agenda item until, uh, things settle down.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, next is L, Town Administrator Incident Command Updates. That would be Mitch and the chief, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our focus this week was on the annual town election. Uh, want to extend thanks to, uh, Town Clerk, Pat Brown, Assistant Clerk, Melanie Waddell, the poll workers, our DPW staff, our police officers who were present. Everything went very, very well. The team did a fantastic job with, uh, making people feel comfortable. It was certainly a big change for those who are working at the polls and very appreciative for everyone's efforts and I think overall it went very, very well. We are also, as I previously referenced, um, we're, oh, the clerk is here, perfect. Uh, perhaps you can touch on that a little more. Let me just unmute her.
Yeah, I gotta put up my volume.
There we go.
I just had to turn my volume up here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, good. I, I just want to say thank you to Mitch, he did a great job. Uh, he organized the DPW to get out there and clean up. I mean, I was out there in the field of the quarter, part of the day and I, Melanie was out there as well and we were getting very positive feedback. Uh, it's just a preliminary, preliminary thing to, uh, the next two elections. And, and again, Mitch, you did an outstanding job. Uh, I have to say, when you speak, people, uh, jump faster than they do for me.
Happy to help, happy to help.
That, you did, it was just, uh, my workers were all there. Uh, I think we're all well, I don't think anybody got sick, at least I've still got my fingers crossed. Uh, we had, uh, 650 people vote by mail, so I think in the next two elections we'll see more of that. Uh, and, uh, I think it was altogether a very positive experience and it's just the new normal and something that we'll get used to. I have to say, the public was outstanding. I don't think we had anybody refuse to wear a mask. Uh, they were very, very good. Uh, we had a breakdown in Precinct Three where the machine, uh, completely broke down. We had to replace the machine, there were people in line, uh, we got them in and out as fast as we could. They safely distanced, there was a police officer there, there was no complaining, it was just very, very, very good job. And again, I'll say thank you to Mitch, he prepared for it, he knew it was coming and, uh, he did a great job.
Thank you, Pat. Pat, I, I just have one question. So these 650 people who may, um, did their mail-in ballot, are they all set for the presidential election?
They are if, when they mailed in or they sent their request in, I'll say that to everybody, you just need to send me a note, uh, requesting it. If they requested all elections this year, your ballot will be in the mail as soon as we get them. Uh, Melanie and I are already preparing by getting the, uh, the, uh, envelopes all together so they'll be all ready to mail, we'll just have to stick in the ballots and out they go. Uh, the other thing is the state is talking about sending every, uh, voter in Massachusetts an application for early voting.
Yeah.
This is something that they're talking about. So if those applications, I'll say it, so anybody hearing me, you don't need an application, you just need to write a letter and sign it. But the state in an effort to get more people to vote early is actually, uh, sending out an application to everybody in Massachusetts. They're in the process of doing that now.
That's wonderful, thank you, Pat.
My understanding is that, that, uh, has already passed the, uh, Massachusetts Senate.
Yeah, they're already, they're already going forward with that, the state is already.
It looks like it, it's gonna, it's gonna be a reality.
Yeah, it is. But I have to say, we did great at the polls, I mean, you know, it's, uh, for a small town, uh, we're ahead of the rest of the community. I'm, I'm so proud of what Massachusetts is doing because between the masks and the sanitizer and, and getting people in and out of town hall and working from home, it's just all working and knock on wood, we're, we're staying safe and that's just a very positive thing.
Yeah. Great. Anything else, Mitch?
Uh, we're, we're preparing for this weekend, we're, uh, gearing up and ready to go, as I discussed, we've got, uh, extensive, um, staff. As I discussed, we've got extensive staffing on hand for this weekend. So we're continuing to be prepared for it.
All hands on deck, correct?
A lot of folks are here. Chief, do you want to touch on some of the staffing and preparedness measures?
Of course. So for 4th of July in particular, we have seven extra officers, I believe, coming in at staggered times throughout the day, right up until midnight on July 5th. In addition to that, we have six firefighters, three from Forest Fire and three from the Fire Department that are going to be out there. Directed patrols helping out with fire in the beach calls, fireworks calls, mask enforcement and such, just quality of life related things. So we'll have a heavy presence on 4th of July, right up until midnight on the 5th. And then we'll have regular patrols and a full complement of officers on Sunday as well because Sunday's weather looks good too. So we have, we have all hands on deck. It'll be a busy, it'll be a busy weekend, but nothing we haven't dealt with before. So just hope everybody's safe fireworks wise and practices, you know, the precautions that everybody's been kind of accustomed to for the last three plus months.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Anything-
How do we handle a situation in which there may be a cookout of over 50 to 100 people? That clearly is not allowed. I mean, how are we, how are we going to handle that, Chief?
So if we, if we received a call like that, we would go, obviously make sure that people were aware of what was required based on, based on the governor's orders and guidelines and speak to the person in charge and ask that they disperse the folks, disperse the people. I honestly think that, I don't know if we'll find one. Are you planning a cookout this weekend?
Say what time, Paul?
Yeah, all welcome.
We'll address it on a case by case basis. We honestly don't want to interrupt anybody's fun, but we want people obviously adhere to, you know, what's being, what's expected. And, you know, I think for the most part, people are doing what they're supposed to.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see that being an issue, but if there is, we'll address it.
Good. Thanks, Chief.
So just to be clear on the guidelines right now, are we still, like, let's say we wanted to have some folks over to our house, 10 people, 20 people? What is it, Bruce? What is the number that the state is recommending?
Boy, I, you know, it might have, I'm not sure whether it's 10 or 25. Barb, do you remember?
Hmm, good, that's a trick question.
I know, I know it goes up to 100 on, starting on Monday, but that doesn't help us on July 4th.
Is the chief calling out its regulation there?
Yeah.
I thought it was more than 10 outside. I could be wrong.
Donna or Leslie, do you know?
I think I have the information.
Are you okay?
So based on the governor's order from, it's order number 28 on June 6th that went into effect on June 8th, it says outdoor activities in unenclosed spaces. This order does not prohibit gatherings of more than 10 people in an unenclosed outdoor space such as a park, backyard, athletic field, or parking lot, provided that every person in attendance is able to regularly maintain six feet distance. The type of gathering at issue has not been prohibited, or the outdoor space in which the gathering will take place has not been closed to the public by previous executive order. Street festivals, agriculture festivals, walkathons, road races, et cetera, and other large similar gatherings are prohibited, yada, yada, yada. So basically, you can have more than 10 people, but they just need to have a large enough space to be able to keep that social distance. There is no-
And that, that's going to change on phase three, which is going to be more, you can have up to 100 people on an outdoor venue.
Right now, there's no maximum amount stated.
Right, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other updates, Mitch?
That's it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, going on to M, Board of Selectmen and Board of Health Updates. I'll start with Board of Selectmen. I just want to start and say, welcome to, for becoming our newest select person. Welcome, Ross. And welcome back, and welcome back, Paul Murphy, as our, as our incumbent. Great race. Good job, everyone. Also want to mention that CN Cellar, the new establishment that we approved the sign for last week, or two weeks ago, I guess it was last week, opened today. They had their grand opening, so welcome to them as a new business downtown, The Porters. Just a quick update on the building committee. We're meeting on the 8th. We're, it's going along well. We looked at more designs of the building. We're looking at heating and electric or propane, or looking at deciding what type of fuel we're going to be using. But the meetings are going very well, I think, and we're right on target. I think we're even a little ahead of target, so I think we're doing very well. So I'll go around and ask each of the selectmen, and then we'll do the Board of Health. Paul, do you have any updates?
No, I just, again, want to thank the voters of Rockport for voting me in to a fourth term. I look forward to being part of the discussion in the next three years. I think we have a lot of issues to tackle. And the other thing I want to do is welcome Selectmen Brackett to the Board of Selectmen. And we ran a good campaign, and I want to thank, obviously, our opponents who threw their hat in the political ring, and I admire anyone who does that. And so I want to thank them as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Paul. Selectman Wilkinson?
Sure, I would, just one update. So I know that I've been lucky to be a part of the Music at the Beach series, which we've done for, I think this would have been the third year, fourth, third, which unfortunately we had to put out, we had to cancel this year. And then, you know, we'll start it up again next year. Basically, you know, just kind of dangerous with the instruments, and we obviously didn't want to put anyone in any uncomfortable positions. But that being put aside, as we enter phase three, at our next meeting, I will be bringing, I have been working with Awesome Rockport, which is a small grant funding group that has funded several, like, really, really cool projects around town. They were one of the first funders of the Music at the Beach series. And I'm sure everyone knows lots of stuff that they've funded, they've funded, you know, numerous, numerous projects around town, at the school. I have had this dream for a long time. I will just say, showing Jaws at the Beach has been a dream. I'm not going to get into details tonight. And it turns out that people in Awesome Rockport had a dream to show something in Millbrook Park. So I know it seems like outdoor movies, drive-ins are kind of the rage this summer with social distancing. So at our next meeting, we will have a proposal for a local, totally safe social distancing event, two events that, for these two boards to consider, that would be much later. One at the very end of July, and then one at the very end of August. So fingers crossed, we enter phase three, but I'll be bringing a very unique but fun proposal to these boards.
I filmed in, filmed in 1975, Jaws. And did you know that Rockport was on the shortlist of having, obviously it was filmed in Martha's Vineyard, but Rockport was on the shortlist to have it filmed there.
I didn't know that, I didn't know that, actually, but we'll see.
Oh, they should have picked us.
So that's it, so that's a little teaser of something fun for locals to go.
Thank you, Sid. Selectman Campbell?
Yeah, first of all, I join in welcoming Ross to the board. I think he's going to be a great addition to the board. But also, Lord knows that we had our differences throughout the last three years, but I want to congratulate and thanks former selectperson Donley on her, on her new appointment to the planning board and to, for the service that she gave to this town. I think the spirit of democracy thrives when there is thoughtful debate put forward, and there was plenty of that. But I want to thank her and also again echo welcoming Ross to the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Selectmen Brackett?
I just want to second what Paul Murphy said and just, you know, with the change of my first term as opposed to his fourth term. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Board of Health, Dr. Cohen?
No updates.
Okay. Mary Beth Murphy?
All set, thank you.
Dr. Newman?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Barb?
I've said enough, thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to Health Agent, Health Inspector, and Health Nurse Updates. Do we need, do we have anything more to talk about there?
I do not have anything specific to report. I'd be happy to field any questions that folks might have, but we continue to move forward. Thanks to the Board of Health Administrative Assistant, Kelsey Schmink. I would not be able to stay on top of all of the appointments and queries that we get. So we just keep handling what comes to us and scheduling field inspections and returning people's phone calls, emails, and texts. There's a lot that goes on that is not apparent. There are times I'm, I'm returning home and thinking, what did we do? That was a full, another full day. And it's a good team, good team effort. That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you.
She's muted.
Hi, sorry, trying to unmute. Thank you. I want to thank John for all, John Koulon for all of his good work with our food inspections and the COVID compliance issues, and also Kelsey Schmink, who's been helping him. I've been busy with septic inspections and plant reviews, Paddle Five inspection reviews, that sort of thing. So that's my report.
And Teresa and Chassie? Anything further to report?
None on my end.
No? Okay, great. Thank you. The next part, number O, is public comment. Mitch, could you open up for public comments?
Anyone public comment, please use the hand raise function, or please raise your hand in your video. There's one phone line, that line's unmuted if you wish to do public comment. Okay, Madam Chair, you see no hands.
Wow. No public comment. Wow, okay.
That never happened when I was chair, Ruth.
How did I get so lucky on my first one? The only thing I had to add was that our next meeting, and I think we were looking at Tuesday, July 14th, in two week, in, you know, get back onto the Tuesday schedule at 6:00 PM, if that's good with everyone.
Yeah.
Is this a Board of Health?
Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, combined.
Are we going to continue our joint meetings moving forward?
So I would recommend that for the month of July, at this point, that they stay, and then that the boards reevaluate at the 28th meeting. That way, in case at this point with phase three starting, and then we'll be in that for quite a while, then we may be able to say, okay, we can reevaluate.
Yeah.
Okay, don't know about Sid, but I'm available the 14th.
Okay, great. Do we have anyone who isn't available on the 14th?
Is the starting time going to be 6:00 or 6:30?
I think 6 o'clock is good to get it done and over with, and since we've been lasting almost two hours or-
Yeah, this was a, this was a one-off. The planning board needed to have an initial meeting before this. Something came up and it didn't happen, but we were trying to accommodate everybody on the same evening.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So we've got Tuesday, July 14th at 6:00 PM.
Yes. Joint Board of Health, Board of Selectmen meeting.
You're in the calendar, Ruth.
Thanks. Any, any other unanticipated items? Anyone wants to talk about or discuss?
Just one quick thing for my Board of Health colleagues. Who's going to chair for the Board of Health portion? Ron, you've done your two weeks. I'm happy to do it. Barb or Mary Beth, I'm happy to defer to either of you as well.
Go right ahead, Ruth.
Yeah, I vote for you, Ruth. I'm kind of spent on school reopening subcommittees right now, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll chair the Board of Health section.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Do I need a roll call vote? Roll call vote. Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Barb McCarthy?
Yes.
Selectman Murphy?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Brackett?
Aye.
Selectman George, aye. We're adjourned. Have a wonderful safe fourth, and we'll see you around town otherwise. Our next meeting is July 14th, 6:00 PM.